Good morning. I'd like to call to order the October 27, 2025 Combined Conference and Meeting for the Mobile County Commission. I'd like to invite Pastor Tony Legere from Mobile Police Department to the podium to give us our invocation. Please remain standing, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, Commissioner Luckin, Commissioner Dewitt. I greet you all from the Mobile Police Department, strong and resolute. Honored to serve you today. Let's pray together. Our Father would give thanks to you for a new day, just like you, to favor us with the smile of your grace. Today, Lord, here at the gates of our city, we humble ourselves before you and we pray, oh Father, have mercy upon us. And then, Lord, we remind you of what your word says: "Bless is the nation whose God is the Lord." And so I pray that righteousness may rule here even in these halls today. Would you bless our leaders as they give oversight to a grand county of over 400,000 people? May we be a blessing in our decisions in their behalf today. We pray this in the strong name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Tony. Do we have speakers this morning?
Yes, ma'am, we have several speakers signed up this morning. And I'd like to remind everyone that speakers have up to five minutes to address the commission. Our first speaker is Christian Ariel Abel.
Abel, sorry.
Abel. And he's here to speak about Grand Bay Country Christmas and Christmas Parade.
Hey, good morning. Sorry, my handwriting's really bad, so I'm Christian Abel. I'm the president of the Grand Bay Community Action Committee in Grand Bay. And our committee is a Christ-centered organization that our focus is bringing the people together and we serve our community in Grand Bay. So I wanted to talk today about our biggest event of the year, which is our Christmas tree lighting, is the Country Christmas Festival and Night of Lights Christmas Parade. This year, it's going to be December 5th and 6th in downtown Grand Bay. And so a little bit about us, we're completely made up of local volunteers, local churches and businesses, business owners. And our focus is to try to create opportunities for our community to come together, our families to come together, and fellowship with each other, and all in the name of Christ. This year is going to be our 29th year of the event. It's a tradition that went back, has started in 1996, and it's grown every year. So this commission has actually helped us. Previously, you guys helped us get our Christmas tree years back, and we're still using the same one. It's a beautiful tree, and we're going to use the same one to light up this year. So a little bit about the event, it's completely, it's local vendors, arts and crafts, food trucks. We'll have performances from our elementary schools, so Castlin and Brightland Elementary, their choirs will come and sing, and it's really, it's a really great time. We'll have live music from our local churches. This year, it's going to be the Cowboy Church and Grand Bay Ministries. So it's going to be a really, a really good performance from them. We'll have the Forts Lake Assembly of God Youth Group. They're going to give us a presentation of the Christmas story, and we're looking forward to this. It's going to be the first time that we've had that. And of course, you know, we set up a big Christmas display. There'll be photo opportunities for the families and everything, too. And then, of course, we have Santa that comes in at 6:30, and that's a big, the main event for all the kids and everything. So they'll be able to come in and sit in Santa's sleigh and take pictures with Santa. So every year, this brings together hundreds of families, and it's a really good time. So just wanted to bring some attention to that and invite the community to come out and support it. The following night will also be our Night of Light Christmas Parade. So we typically have about 4,000 people that come out and see that every year. So Commissioner Dewitt, we did invite you to ride in the parade again this year, so we'd love to have you if you're able to come. So, and that's it. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, and thanks for the invitation. And I have ridden, I think I've missed one Christmas parade, so enjoy it. It's one of the bigger ones in the area, for sure.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for being here today, and we'll make sure that Danny is aware of the situation out there, and we'll certainly advertise it on our social medias as well. So thank you, Christian.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the rest of the speakers, I got a little off my agenda. I need to recognize three employees whose retirement will be effective November 1st, 2025. They are James A. Head, Senior, from the Public Works Department at Equipment Operator III, 27 years and 6 months; Johnny Swenson, Judicial Police, Police Officer, 25 years and 8 months; and Lolita Whitfield, Sheriff's Metro Jail Record Supervisor, 21 years and 6 months. If you're here, please join us down here.
I know how that feels. I've been here that long myself. But we have a resolution here, a certificate of retirement. It says the Mobile County Commission presents Johnny with his, and I guess we're missing one? Anyway, they both, Johnny's right, yeah. Says, "We present this certificate as well wishes and express it sincere thanks for 25 years and 8 months of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come, and we wish you good health, happiness, continued success in your retirement." And Lolita, yours says the same thing, "For 21 years and 6 months, and we thank you for your service at Metro Jail." I know that that can be cumbersome sometimes over at the jail, but thank you for your service.
Okay. Let us resume with our speakers, please.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. The next four speakers have asked to address the commission about, with public comment, they say that their topic is that the county budget supports courts in a manner they feel is unconstitutional. So each has been a prize of the time, and I'll be timing them. So our first is Sue Connor.
My name is Sue Connor. I'm a civil rights advocate, and I provide public notice to the commission. This is in accordance with USC's Rules of Civil Procedures, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has the overarching requirements that every state must follow. States cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean that the state laws are more powerful than the Constitution, and that's unlawful. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 states, "No person shall be held to answer for capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment by grand jury." However, the state of Alabama has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits prosecuting attorneys and police officers to charge by way of information as opposed by indictment. That is unconstitutional. An emolument violation is when you pay a public official to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforce this. Article 1, Section 10 says, "No state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts." Police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under a contract, a contract to perform based on the oath or affirmation that they took to support and defend the Constitution. Contract parameters are defined within the Constitution of the United States, and when a state enacts an inferior law that directs their agents to disobey the Constitution of the United States, that is a violation of Article 1, Section 10. The 14th Amendment is the other place that you'll find the reinforcement of this issue, and that is where it states that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of United States citizens. The privileges and immunities of United States citizens are at a minimum those that are enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments. Unfortunately, the state of Alabama has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that permits public officials, I'm sorry, public officials, judges, law enforcement officers, whom you all pay, to violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there is an inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in the state of Alabama illegally and unconstitutionally. Tanaa Downing is litigating this issue at the United States Supreme Court. I'm here to notify you that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, criminal sanctions can come from that. Official must be made aware that paying people to disobey the law is an emolument violation. It is illegal, it is unconstitutional, and it is a crime. I'm asking you honorable individuals to please take a look at Clause 1 of Amendment 5, confirm that what I'm saying to be true, and then direct your public officials to act in a lawful constitutional manner consistent with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America. I have a notice that I would like to put on the record. Thank you.
Our second speaker on the same topic, and I would request that each speaker identify themselves, state your name and address for the record. And I don't know if I can read your handwriting properly. Is it Tanaa?
Tanaa, my name's Tanaa.
Tanaa Downing?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. My name is Tanaa Downing. I'm the civil rights advocate litigator that Ms. Connors was just...
I'm sorry. Could you state your address, please, sir?
Yes, it's 152 Wayne Place Southeast, Washington DC 20032. So let me just start by saying, I'm not here to get anybody into trouble. That's not what this is about. I want to inform you guys of a situation that we really do need to get addressed, and honestly, we're going to. So I'm preparing to litigate this on behalf of the 1,700,000 people that are currently imprisoned here in America illegally and constitutionally because the states have failed to follow the very basic procedures and processes enumerated and codified in the Constitution of the United States for the adjudication of a crime. Guys, no state can create its own alternative legislation, substitute that for the guarantees of the Constitution, and go out and enforce that. That is unconstitutional. The state of Alabama's done just that. Every single time the state goes out and performs an arrest without having it indicted by a grand jury as required by Clause 1 Amendment 5, a crime is committed. So I have approximately 17,000 criminal affidavits from victims that have been charged by way of information as opposed to indictment from right here within the state of Alabama. These affidavits, they identify two different crimes in particular. The first is Title 18 USC Subsection 242, which is deprivation of rights under color of law. What that statute states is that any person who, under the color of any state statute, ordinance, custom, or regulation deprives any person of any rights secured by the Constitution, commits that crime. The second crime is Title 18 USC Subsection 241, which is conspiracy to deprive of rights. What that statute says is that when two or more persons conspire with the purpose of depriving any person of any rights secured by the Constitution, commits that crime. Now, the law is a criminal conspiracy with regard to public officials, all of you. What that states is that any person who, having knowledge of any of the wrongs, conspired to be done and who have the power to prevent or aid in the prevention of the commission of the same, neglects or refuses to do so, may be joined as dependents of the action. So upon having been provided with this notice today, letting you know that you guys are paying the sheriff's department to go out and execute unconstitutional warrants that derive from a direct breach of a constitutional obligation, I ask you guys, please, let's work together to fix this problem. Because the alternative is, is that I'll have to convert these criminal affidavits into criminal complaints. I don't want to do that. Please don't make me have to do that. But we got to work together here. You guys are going to have to step forward in truth, understanding the limitations of power that the state of Alabama has codified in the Constitution of the United States and the exercise of your power. But if you continue to pay these public officials to abridge their constitutional, codified obligations, criminal sanctions can come from that. And I don't want to go down that path. Please don't make me have to. So I know that as soon as we're done, you're going to go to your attorney, and you're going to ask that attorney whether or not what I'm saying is true. That attorney is going to point you to a case from 1884 from the United States Supreme Court called Hurtado versus California. And before you guys choose to rely upon that as the foundation, I must remind you that the Constitution of the United States of America is the foundation, not a judge-made ruling. The Supreme Court of the United States has no constituted authority to be able to alter and destroy any of the provisions or guarantees of the Constitution, because that must be done by an authentic and explicit act of the people in accordance with the special many procedure of Article 5. Furthermore, judges cannot legislate. We know that because Clause 1, Article 1, says all legislative power is vested in the Congress of the United States. So please don't rely upon the foolish belief that the judge-made ruling is superior to the Constitution of the United States of America. So the difference between today and tomorrow is negligence to lawful criminal conduct. Because upon having been provided with this notice, letting you know that you guys are paying people to abridge their constitutional obligation, the matter becomes much more serious after this. So the notice is on the record. I would ask you guys to please review that notice. Everything is in it. My contact information is there. I would love to work with you guys to fix this problem, but we're going to have to work together. So I want to end it with this, right? Because I want to entice you guys to go in the right direction, because I know that this is a difficult decision that you guys are going to have to make here. Soon as we're done, you're going to have to decide whether you're going to follow a judge-made ruling, the lowest form of law, or the Constitution of the United States of America, the object of which your fidelity is bound. I'm going to pray that you guys make the right decision. The United States Circuit Court has identified a two-part test to determine abuse of discretion. Okay? The second part of that test says that any erroneous view of the law is an automatic abuse of discretion. An erroneous view of law would be that in your legal contemplation that the lowest form of law, a judge-made ruling, is superior to the Constitution of the United States of America, that would be an obvious erroneous view of law. Therefore, if you continue to pay these public officials after being made aware, an automatic abuse of discretion will have occurred in accordance with the United States Circuit Court. Thank you guys so much. God bless. Have a great rest of your day.
Can I?
Commissioner Downing, okay, I'm trying to get the kernel of the complaint. Is it that we are, in Alabama, people are arrested before they are indicted? Is that the...
In the state of Alabama, you permit your prosecuting attorneys, under your inferior state constitution, you permit your prosecuting attorneys to charge by information or indictment by their discretion. It's written in your constitution. And I've already served your Attorney General, so he's well aware of this. I've already served your Supreme Court justices, they're well aware of it. We're now serving the legislative branch, that's all of you. But yes, there's two issues with that. The first issue is, is that you can never use discretion with regard to one's lawful obligations. Obligations must be performed, otherwise you're abusing your discretion to break the law. That's issue number one. Issue number two is, is that you can never create a law that permits the prosecuting attorney to decide who has a constitutional right and who does not. That's a violation of the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. Yes, the state of Alabama has got tens of thousands of people currently imprisoned that did not receive an indictment by grand jury despite the fact that that is required by Clause 1 of Amendment 5 to the United States Constitution. I'm not saying these are good people.
So it's the information that is the problem? That you're saying that it should only be an indictment and that the additional availability of information as a prosecutorial tool is, that's what's unconstitutional?
There are three ways to charge a person with crime. One is the presentment to a grand jury, one is an indictment from a grand jury, the third is an information. And information goes to a judge, and the judge determines whether or not there's sufficient probable cause to assume that a crime has been committed. What happens there is it eliminates the neutral, unbiased, third-party decision-maker. The grand jury's there for that role and that purpose. We need to make sure that we have someone in place that is not associated with the state as an agent of the state that's in the process to make sure that the state and the prosecutor is not exceeding the power, authority, statutory, or court upon them. Thank you so much.
Got it.
God bless you guys. Thank you.
What are you suggesting that the county commission do pertaining, are you suggesting that we defund the sheriff's office? I'm confused on exactly what it is you're asking from the commission. We don't, we don't pay judges. I mean, I understand that we're responsible budgetarily for the sheriff's office, so what do you...
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. You guys fund the sheriff's department, and you guys fund the resources for the courtroom, county courtroom, as well as also the jail. If the sheriff is going out and executing a warrant, and I'm not saying that they know that they're doing this, but if they're executing a warrant that is based upon an information not an indictment, that sheriff is now complicit in a criminal act, a conspiracy to deprive of rights. Whether they know it or not is irrelevant. Negligence of the law is no justification for having broken it. So when they arrest that person, they put them into a county jail whom you guys fund, that housing or that holding is unconstitutional because the Constitution says no person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime, and lastly, presentment or indictment of a grand jury. I'm not an abolitionist, right? And I can't tell you guys how to exercise your power. All that I can do is I can say that if you guys pay people to abridge their Constitution, that is an emolument violation, and it is a crime. And we're hoping that we can work together to fix this problem. You guys, as the legislative body, provide oversight. The oversight that you can provide is you can direct them to act in a constitutional manner in the course of their business. Because if they don't act in a constitutional manner consistent with their business, upon having been provided with this notice, you can become complicit yourself within it. I don't want to defund the sheriff's department, but I do want the sheriff's department to act in a lawful constitutional manner and protect the individual rights of the people in the exercise of their power.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There are two more speakers on this same topic. Melissa Hara, and please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Hara. I'm a family advocate. My address is 896 Zach Lane, Repton, Alabama. And I am here on behalf of multiple families who I work with. I also work as a paralegal for a law firm up in my area. And I work with families, same topic, but slightly different venue of it. Our courts here in this state, especially in this county, have been taking information from our Department of Human Resources and looking at it as if being produced by a prosecutor, as if being brought forth as an evidentiary. When these families, their rights are being violated because there is no due process. It has been ruled by the Supreme Court many a times that due process must be completed before a family is stripped of their children, because that deprives a parent of their rights to their children, it deprives the children of their rights to a family. And this due process of the hearing within 72 hours or before the removal of the child does not occur in hardly even half of the cases that I have personally worked with. So as a parent who loves my children, I feel that I should bring forth this information because, two, this falls under 18 USC 242 and 241, because it has been long established through multiple cases that the Constitution of families is a very important thing, so much so that I have worked with state legislators to bring forth a bill, HB 6, that was passed several years ago, creating statute 26-1-6, the fundamental rights of a parent. And it says that a parent has a fundamental right to the education, upbringing, and well-being of their children. It does not allow for abuse, but it says that a government may not intervene into that family without the most strict of scrutiny to bring the least amount of harm to the family. And that's not what's being done within this county. Children are being deprived of their parents, and parents are being deprived of their children based on a statement made from someone who has no direct knowledge many a times into a family. These caseworkers will go out and remove the children, they will use the police force to do so. They will not have a valid court order to do so, but because they represent a state agency, the police department unknowingly backs them and helps invade the rights of the parent without valid court order. And this in itself is unconstitutional and a violation of due process. And I would hope that as a county whole, that the county can work on some kind of, not necessarily to increase funding, but to increase oversight within the funding that is allowed, to limit this and make sure that all state agencies work accordingly for the due process of family, because it is important to protect the constitutional rights of families. Thank you.
Ma'am, who is the sponsor of House Bill 6 in the state legislature?
That was Kenneth Pascal.
Who?
Kenneth Pascal.
Thank you.
And the final speaker on this topic is Ms. Jessica Saxton. And if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Saxton. My address is 152 Wayne Place Southeast, Washington DC. I am also a civil rights advocate, and I am in active litigation at this point. I am here to provide notice. This is in accordance with USC's Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 from the United States Supreme Court. As we've already established, the Constitution of the United States is, in fact, the supreme law of the land. That means that no state, no county, no court has the authority to create or enforce policies that contradict our United States Constitution or deprive citizens that are secured and protected by those rights. This is happening every single day, not just in this county, but in every single county. There's 300, 143 counties across America, and this is happening every single day in every county, including Mobile, Alabama. Across this nation, children are being removed unlawfully from fit, loving parents, not for abuse, not for danger, but absolutely 100% for profit. Title 4D, Title 4E, and Title 4B incentivizes the state to remove children unlawfully from parents, place them into state custody, or enforce unlawful child support. This means that the system is absolutely profiteering off of the destruction of our families. This is a federal pipeline. It is a federal pipeline of money that has turned our children into financial commodities. And unfortunately, this is not a conspiracy. This is absolutely codified in federal funding. What is equally as disturbing is that the portion of this county's budget contributes to the operation of the very courts that are participating in the unlawful removal of children. This means that your public tax dollars are being paid and used to violate constitutional rights and to carry out actions that absolutely result in the separation of children from fit, loving parents without due process of law, without the jury trials, and oftentimes, most often, without even a preponderance of evidence. When government officials, including the officials that you pay, like the sheriff's department, including judges, which although you may not pay them, you absolutely facilitate the things that they do in their court, you pay for that facilitation. Guardian ad litem, many counties pay directly to guardian ad litem, and any other county-funded agency that knowingly violates the Constitution is absolutely a crime, as Ms. Downing just pointed out. When you guys do so, in exchange for federal gain, that absolutely becomes an emolument violation under Article 1, Section 10, and a violation of the 14th Amendment, which abridges the privileges and immunities of United States citizens. Now, this is where I think you were asking, sir, this is where, this is what you can do. So USC 18, I'm sorry, Title 18 USC 4, that is misprisoned felony. And what that states is that whoever has been made... a crime, as Ms. Downing just pointed out. When you guys do so, in exchange for federal gain, that absolutely becomes an emolument violation under Article one, section ten, and a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment, which abridges the privileges and immunities of United States citizens. Now, this is where I think you were asking, sir, this is where, this is what you can do. So USC eighteen, I'm sorry, Title eighteen USC four, that is misprisoned felony. And what that says is that whoever has been made aware of a federal crime and does not as soon as possible report that crime to the appropriate authorities, which is a United States civil or military authority, they actually commit a felony. That's a felony in itself. So as elected officials, all of you have also swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution. That means that no state policy, no federal incentive, no judicial preferences can violate that Constitution. Thus, you have an oath. That's a contract. That's an oath that you have promised to the people of Mobile, Alabama. So by continuing to fund these unconstitutional practices and then receiving notice, you all are being placed on notice right now that the commission is at risk of implicating ongoing violations. So I'm calling for you immediately to withhold, actually to withhold any county-level funding at this point after being provided notice. So yes, if defunding the sheriff's department for a month is what you have to do in order to protect the people of this county and support and defend the Constitution and make sure that their rights are being secured, absolutely, I would say you defund the sheriff's department for a month. Same thing with the courts. So I'm serving you today, every one of you today, you're being served. You're being served with affidavits of criminal conspiracy. This contains prima facie evidence, prima facie evidence of crimes that are being committed by judges within your county. Our children are not for sale. Please know that parents are not a revenue stream and no system, no system that profits off of the destruction of families has a moral or constitutional authority to continue to exist. So service has been provided and the law requires you to report these crimes to the appropriate agency. Thank you.
No more speakers.
Mr. Kerr?
Item one, approval list of claims.
So moved. Second.
Two, hold public hearings so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
The public hearing is now in session? Or their speaker's for or against? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Three, adopt resolution revising the Mobile County Commission conference and meeting schedule for twenty-four through twenty-eight as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Four, approve annual renewal of agreement with Civic Plus to provide digital agenda management in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-two cents for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Five, adopt resolution authorizing request of the sheriff's office to dispose of certain items from the fixed assets inventory list and declare a surplus property and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved.
Second.
Six, award bid to Montgomery Technology Systems for twenty-five, twenty-six detention, intercom inspections, and maintenance for their bid in the total amount of sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Seven, approve alcohol license application of King Smoke Shop for a lounge retail liquor class two and a tobacco-only license doing business as Dawes Package Store located at thirty-four sixty Dawes Road.
So moved.
Second.
Eight, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of ten thousand dollars from District three education funds to assist with the costs of the JROTC STEM Leadership Academy.
So moved.
Second.
Nine, approve amendment to the annual appropriation contract with the Explorer Center doing business as Gulf Coast Explorium Science Center to provide additional funds in the amount of fifteen thousand from District two education funds for its winter exhibit Galileo, the Science of Antiquity from January through May of twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Ten, approve sponsorship agreement with Mobile Law Enforcement Foundation in the total amount of fifteen hundred dollars for its annual luncheon on Wednesday, November sixteenth with funds divided as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Eleven, approve sponsorship agreement with the Child Advocacy Center in the total amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for its Serve It Up With Love tennis tournament on Sunday, April twenty-sixth and Tuesday, April twenty-eighth with funds divided as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Twelve, approve agreement with Community Foundation of South Alabama in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from District one education funds and authorize deposit of twenty-five thousand dollars from District one funds into the said fund and authorize the president of the commission to sign all relevant documents. The donor-advised endowed fund with the Community Foundation of South Alabama will support the acquisition and maintenance of sites of historical significance relating to African-American contributions to Mobile County.
So moved.
Second.
Thirteen, approve amending two thousand twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan to create project purchase of property located on York Haven Road, Mobile County, Alabama. The estimated budget for this project is three hundred thousand dollars. This amendment creates a new project and also allocates three hundred thousand dollars for the budget from the two thousand twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan, District three unnamed projects.
So moved.
Second. What's this close to?
It's immediately north of West Mobile County Park where the football fields are. It's just vacant. Well, there's actually a warehouse and a barn on the property that environmental services are going to utilize for maintenance equipment and stuff for the park, but it's adjacent to West Mobile County Park.
Okay. Thank you.
And commissioners, on item fourteen, we have a change to the last name, the first name listed, and will read as follows. Approve purchase of real property from Bradley Lynn Wilson, Robin Ann Smith, and Casey J. Smith for approximately twelve point zero five acres located on York Haven Road, Mobile County, Alabama, for the purchase price of three hundred thousand dollars plus agreed upon closing cost and authorize commission president to sign all documentation related to the transaction pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Fifteen, approve acceptance of updates to the bylaws and policies and procedures of the Alabama Association of Retired Senior Volunteer Program Directors.
So moved.
Second.
Sixteen, authorize amendment to the home agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants with Mobile elderly housing regarding development of fifty-six units of senior housing in conjunction with Alabama Housing Finance Authority tax credits and authorize the commission president to execute all documents associated with this project.
So moved.
Second.
Seventeen, accept grant subsidy award for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six in the amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars from the Alabama Department of Youth Services.
So moved.
Second.
Eighteen, approve change order number two with Harris Contracting Services for Project Lewis Landing. This change order will increase the contract amount by twenty-seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars and increase the contract time by fourteen calendar days. The new contract will be in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and the date of substantial completion is December second.
So moved.
Second.
Nineteen, approve change order number four with Jay Hunt Enterprises for Project Chickasobee Park Entrance Day Use and Trail Improvement. The change order will decrease the contract by forty-five thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents with the final contract in the total amount of seven million eighty thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty, approve sponsorship agreement with Marine Environmental Sciences Consortium doing business as Mobile Bay National Estuary Program in the amount of three thousand dollars from District one education funds for its eleventh annual breakfast on December third.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-one, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Symphonic Pops Band in the amount of five thousand dollars from District two education funds for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Can we go back to number twenty? I meant to, I want to change this. I wanted to split that. If that's, okay. Can we change that?
Yes, we can make that change.
Sorry, forgot. It went right past me. Fifteen hundred dollars, and that'll come out of my education.
Yes, sir. Twenty-two, approve appropriation contract with Liberty Learning Foundation in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars from District two commission funds for its Super Citizen Program.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-three, approve appointment of Don McCardle to serve as District two administrator effective November first.
So moved.
Second. Don, are you here?
She's here.
Okay, stand up. Welcome. And while we're doing that, I guess we can just say this is Grace's last meeting. Grace Abernathy, please stand.
Twenty-four, consider taking the following action on bids.
Jay, do you need some time to think about whether or not we need to continue to fund the sheriff's office for the next month before we vote on this? Because there's some things in there for the sheriff's office.
I think we should fund it for the next month while I ponder some of their arguments.
Second.
Twenty-five, approve renewal of software agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents for Nemo Q licenses for the Revenue Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, approve renewal of three-year software agreement with Converge one, under the current state of Alabama contract, in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety cents for Cisco Wireless Access Point Software for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-seven, approve renewal of license agreement with DocuSign Government at Carisoft under current GSA schedule for e-signature Enterprise Pro for Gov, Envelope, and Enterprise Premier Support for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-eight, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute in the amount of twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars for premium support services for the Revenue Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners, we would like to remove item twenty-nine. Item thirty, approve change order with Holland to cancel the current Fortis Comprehensive Conversion Project. This change order accounts for work completed during the discovery phase and the method of document extraction in the total amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars to the county. The change order results in a cost savings of fifty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the initial bid approved on June tenth, two thousand twenty-four, agenda item number nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-one, approve renewal of service agreement with BB's Pest and Termite Control in the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars for Centricon Monitoring at Escataba Hollow Park and Campground.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve amending September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five minutes, agenda item number thirty-six, to change the copier model as follows for both copiers. The price will remain the same at one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and two cents per month each for three years.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-three, approve amending item number forty-one of October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-fifth meeting to reflect correct date of appointment of Dr. Mary Ann Membaka as a director of the Mobile County Hospital Board for a term of six years beginning October first.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-four, approve agreement with election systems and software in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars for maintenance and software licenses for the Information Technology Department Voting Machine Division pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-five, approve lease agreement between the county and the University of South Alabama bind through its USA Health Center for Healthy Communities, a five oh one C three public charity, for office space at the James T. Strickland Youth Center for an eighteen-month term with a nominal rent provision.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-six, approve amending October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes, agenda item number thirty-five, to adjust the thirty-six-month lease agreement monthly cost with Dex Imaging from seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents to a decreased amount of five hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-nine cents per month for one Konica Minolta copier for the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-seven, approve contract amendment number one to the Professional Architectural Services Contract with Americana Architects to provide design services for treehouse structures at Escataba Hollow Park and Campground.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-eight, approve rental rate increases for the following venues in the Mobile Government Plaza, atrium, auditorium, commissioner conference chamber, multipurpose assembly room, and executive meeting room effective immediately. Rate increases include after-hours security and staffing, portable restrooms, custodial fees, and supplies pending legal review.
Dina, do you, I tried to find some documentation. Do you know what the increases are, the prices are going from into what the new price would be? Or if not, could you get that to me for me, please? I was just curious as to what the price currently is. I understand what the increases are for, just because of the cost of doing business and things, but I was just curious as to how much the increase was. Thank you. So moved.
One, just one question. So when we arrived at these numbers, we surveyed other venues just to make sure that we were in line with what the market is and the community?
Yes, Commissioner, we did. We compared venues that are like ours. However, most of the other venues are a little bit larger than what we have in our capacity. But we looked at those things and we looked at the cost of, of course, security and the additional things that we would have to add to it in order to give a lease for what they're asking for.
And so our numbers reflect like the difference in size and amenities and that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Second.
Thirty-nine, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of a portion of the following public streets bounded by the territories annexed by the city of Creola pursuant to city ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Forty, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of a portion of the following public street bounded by the territories annexed by the city of Sims pursuant to city ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-one, approve proposed and final plats of the following subdivisions.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-two, approve final plats of the Penny Lakes first and second additions and accept roads right of ways as shown on the subdivision's plats for the following streets and accept the roads in these subdivisions for maintenance by Mobile County together with the drainage system as it affects said roads and accept the warranty deeds for the rights of ways indicated on these plats.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-three, approve license to utilize easement with Spire Gulf for Project Windsor Road West Bridge Replacements and Gray Drain bridge replacements and grade drain basin pave.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-four, approve assigning a contract for professional engineering services for Project McDonald Road at Belmont Park Drive intersection improvements to Civil Southeast.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-five, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Track Four on Notchess Trace Road in the amount of one thousand one hundred dollars for Project Notchess Trace Road Grain Drain Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-six, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-seven, approve final plat of Highland Point Phase One and accept the road rights of ways as shown on the subdivision plat for the following streets and accept the roads in this subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage system as it affects said roads and accept the warranty deed for the rights of ways indicated on this plat.
Jimbo, is that, you happy to get to this point finally? So moved.
Second.
Forty-eight, commission announcements and/or comments.
I don't think so. I'll keep my comments to myself.
I paid him a lot to do that.
Thank you.
Just today.
Thank you, Ms. Lookit, for paying.
And following this meeting, as a reminder, we do have the Mobile County Indigent Care Board. Forty-nine, approve request for motion to adjourn until November tenth.
So moved.
Second. I'd like to call to order the October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Mobile County Indigent Care Board meeting.
One, approve minutes of the meeting of September twenty-second.
So moved.
Second.
Two, accept report from Mobile County Commission of the balance in the Indigent Care Fund as of September thirtieth. Funds available, one hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and six cents.
So, so moved.
Second.
Three, approve disbursement of the Indigent Care Fund cash receipts on September twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth for the periods of July two thousand twenty-five through September two thousand twenty-five to the following entities in the following amounts.
So moved.
Second.
Four, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.